Good evening and welcome to this Leta Independent School District's video conference meeting of the Board of Trustees. We are invited to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizen input, electronic sign up show the rules for the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. The board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:00 PM. We have a meeting with Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Lucero, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Katherine, put your mic on.
Sorry about that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and indivisible. And now for a moment of silence.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Lucero. I was informed by Ms. Matheson that we don't have any citizen input tonight, so we'll just move on. A recognition for this evening is our school lunch heroes. We have one special recognition this evening in honor of our child nutrition services staff, district employees involved with the Grab and Go School Meals programs for our students. These employees have provided critical service excellence to our families and communities since the school closures began in March. Every weekday morning, they can be found hard at work at the eighteen schools operating the Grab and Go Meal Program, cheerfully providing curbside delivery of breakfast and lunch meals for thousands of students, all while observing safety precautions. Tonight, the district wants to let them know their dedication and commitment to our students and family has not gone unnoticed. As a small token of our thanks, we have created a special video to honor our school lunch heroes. Let's take a look. Thank you again for our school lunch heroes. This concludes our recognition for the evening. Thank you. All right, next, my section. Under the Office of the Superintendent. Required Annual Report of Board Continued Education Hours. Okay, under the State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation for any sitting board member. As Board President, I am required to announce the name of each member who has members' anniversary election or appointment of the board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is deficient in the required continued education. There are four tiers or categories of board member continuing education. Tier one, local district orientation, legal orientation, and upstate training. Tier two, team building training with all board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education. And tier four, evaluating and improving student outcomes. To the extent applicable to the board members under the legal requirements for the four tiers, I will announce the completion or efficiency as required training. For members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled timely training and those who have not yet received the training. As a conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board members training in excess of the continued education requirements. Okay, if no tier one training required in year of announcement, this year there are no tier one training requirements of any type to be announced for any city member of tiers, team building training. Note, the entire board and a superintendent must participate in the annual tier two team building. This training should be completed at the time of the annual announcement. The following board members have completed the required team building training. Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Richard Cudair, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa, and Superintendent Dr. Xavier de la Torre. Tier three, annual continuing education. The following board members have completed the tier three annual continuing education requirements. Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Richard Cudair, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Tier four, evaluating and student outcomes training. The following members have completed the required training on evaluating and improving student outcomes. Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Richard Cudair, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Now we go on to exceeding required continuing education. Board member Charlie Bustillos exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 4.5 additional hours. Board member Richard Cudair exceeded the required amount of required continuing education by 11.33 additional hours. Board member Soltero Ramirez exceeded the amount of required continuing education training by seven. Board member Katherine Lucero exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 21.5 additional hours. Board member Mike Rosales exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 13.5 additional hours. Board member Connie Woodruff exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 10.5 additional hours. Board member Cruz Ochoa exceeded the required amount of required continuing education training by 12 additional hours. That's the end of... All right. Now we move on to the agenda review. During the May 11th Board Workshop, the trustee Woodruff asked to pull consent item number four for a separate vote. We will consider the remaining consent items as one vote unless there are items you wish to pull for separate consideration. Are there any consent items to pull for a separate? If there are no other items you wish to pull for a separate consideration, the remainder of the consent agenda items will be posted. Regarding the order of the action items, there is no objection. I'd like to move action item number six to the beginning of action item agenda. Is there any objection? Given, thank you, hearing no objection, the agenda and the order of the action items will be considered a consensus of the board. Okay, the order of agenda has been approved. May I have a motion on the remaining set agenda items?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff. I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by...
May I have a second?
Hi.
Did you say you wanted a second, Katherine?
Just a second.
My Ms. Katherine Lucero? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. I'm going to go to the full consent agenda items. Number four, naming of a new middle school in the Hanks Learning Community. Is there any discussion? I myself would like to take this opportunity to thank you, the Facilities Naming Advisory Committee, for support and dedication to this task. I'm grateful that you put in a lot of work and a lot of time and you've considered many names, but I thank you. Further discussion? Okay, no further discussion, I, Trustee Cruz Ochoa, will make the motion. I move to approve Hanks Middle School as the name for the new middle school in the Hanks Learning Community as submitted by the Facilities Naming Advisory Committee. I have a second.
Second, this is Connie Woodruff.
I have a second, my Ms. Woodruff? Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Very good. All right, results are in, six in favor. Okay, now we move on to our public hearing. Public, number one, public hearing on the proposed budget 2020-21. As tech as a taxi entity, the district is required to provide an annual forum for the public to provide input on the district's purpose. This is the hearing for that purpose. Board trustees appreciate and welcome to your input during the public hearing. We invite you to participate through an electronics sign up. Ms. Matheson advised me that if no one signed up to speak, then I will close the public hearing at this time. Okay, action items. I'd like to read action item number six. Okay, this is now number one. Possible appointment to fill vacancy of board member representing Leta ISD District Three for the unexpired term. Is there any discussion? Ms. Lucero?
Yes, there's a discussion and then I would like to make a few comments, but I guess after we take action. But we got, we received a letter this afternoon from our attorney, Mr. Soffe, and I would just like to, just to clarify, Mr. Soffe, if you could, just go over the, so that I just to clarify that there are no conflicts of interest in bringing on, as a, as our board member Shane Hagerty, I would just like to have that, have you explain that to us, just for clarification purposes, please?
If I might, President Ochoa, Ms. Lucero, trustees, superintendent de la Torre, right, the, I think the question is whether if a trustee is an employee or owner of a business entity that does business with the district, does that disqualify that person from serving as a trustee? And the answer to that is no, it does not qualify that person. That person, if that person's a trustee, then there are various closure and recusal requirements imposed by applicable law that are largely in the local government code and collected at Board Policy F.A. Legal. And they basically require if a trustee or is related to the trustee within the first degree of conformity or affinity, that would be basically parent, child, or spouse, has a, what's called a substantial interest in a business entity that's doing business with the district, or in real estate that the district is considering purchasing or leasing or otherwise affecting in that way, then the trustee has to file a conflict disclosure statement and then has to recuse himself or herself from any further involvement regarding that matter at the board level. In other words, would have to recuse from any vote on that. And that's as per BBFA Legal and the laws cited therein. There's also the requirement to file what's called a CIS form, which is a conflict of interest statement that needs to be filed by trustees whenever they have a, an employment relationship or a business ownership relationship or receive gifts of a certain amount, either them or, again, relatives within the first degree of consequently or affinity, that has to also be filed and disclosed. So those are the requirements, but they do not prohibit a trustee, a person from serving as a trustee, as long as those disclosure and recusal requirements are met.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. No further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff. I move to approve the appointment of Shane Hagerty to serve as Board of Trustee for YISD District Three until the next regular election for District Three in 20, May 2021.
May I have a second? Okay, Mr. Bustillos, you have a second? By Mr. Bustillos. Hey, Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote? Trustee, you forgot, you're muted, Mr. Rosales. There you are. Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yay.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Woodruff?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero?
Yay.
Can I also make a comment, Board President?
Let me finish and then...
Okay.
Ochoa, vote yay. Okay, the results are in, six in favor, none opposed. Did you have a second?
Yes, I just wanted to say that the losing trustee Cudair as a, as a board member was unexpected and extremely unfortunate, but I do think during this difficult time that we're facing as a community, I believe appointing Shane, and I'm very excited to bring him back on board, is doing the right thing for the Parkland community. He's been extremely involved and has remained involved, he has children with the district, and I believe he will do good by, by the community. He has a strong history of advocacy and I'm excited to have him join us as a board member.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Did you have something to say, Mr. Rosales? No? Okay.
He will bring up quite a bit of input to our, to our board. He's a, he's an engaged type of individual, has proven to us that he enjoys what he does and is very committed to the children of Parkland area as well as the entire district. So I welcome him and thank you for voting.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Okay, no further comments, I'd like to move on. Okay, now we'll move on to action item number two, adoption of the 2025 strategic plan for the district, including board goals. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Okay, just a couple of comments and, and I would thank the, the Dr. de la Torre and the entire team for doing such an excellent job of putting the, the strategic plan together. I think that having that plan for the 2015 plan was a good roadmap, good guide, and held us accountable, helped the board accountable for the work that needed to be done. The, this one wall should also do the same, and I will be curious to see how we do as a, how we perform in light of all the things that are going on and, and during these extraordinary times, the challenges, and, and of course, there's some opportunities there as well that we have. I, I do have, I don't have a problem with any of the content inside the book, but I would like to ask that we consider, I sent an email out, I guess we had the opportunity to look at it, I sent an email out asking for that the booklet include a letter with, from Mr. President Ochoa, welcoming the readers to our district and, and, you know, and talking about things important about why we do the, what we do and that sort of thing and, and introducing document and thanking the community for, that part of the community that played such a huge role in putting it together. And then the second thing I would like to see done, I'd like to see a page done that acknowledges who the trustees were during this time period. I, I don't want to joke about it, you know, that way they know who to blame, but the reality is, is that, you know, we, we get recognized for just about everything. We can't even go to a play at a school and, and the list of trustees is there. I would like to see that and, and while I certainly can't speak for, to, I wouldn't want to presume anything, I would also like to ask Dr. de la Torre and President Ochoa that they would consider having a page for the cabinet as well. Let's, let's be real honest, without the trustees and certainly without our cabinet, we could not do this work, folks, and, and now more than ever, it's shown that we needed the whole team to make this happen. So I would be glad to make the motion, unless anybody else has comments, I would be glad to make the motion for this, but just ask that we make those adjustments in the, as part of, as part of that, and so I thank you for the chance to speak.
Absolutely, we will, the content, of course, is what's most important, and to be honest, after having experienced the last ninety days of COVID and looking at some of our bold goals and targets, anyone else may want to retreat from it, but I'd like to use it as a rally call to all our principals, teachers, and staff that regardless of the circumstances that we've been faced with this spring, that our, we should be myopic and almost maniacal about trying to get students to where we believe they deserve to be and not relying on excuses like the COVID. I mean, it's real, it certainly happened, but we had a, we had a long lengthy discussion about pulling back on some of the goals for 2025, and I think most of my team felt the way I did, and we felt like, no, those, those lofty goals, those bold goals are, we're going to rally everybody around, and whether we do it in a traditional platform, a virtual platform, or a hybrid platform, a traditional calendar, or an intercessional calendar, ultimately, these kids didn't cause this, they didn't ask for this, they are victims of this, and they deserve 110% of all of our efforts. So we're going to maintain the content, we're going to make some adjustments to the book, we'll be contacting each of you and try to get some photographs, some information, maybe some comments around the fact that we're launching this at a very difficult time. I'm not much for pictures, you know me, I don't like, but, but I will see if I can convince the cabinet to sit with me and take a photograph, and the idea is to try to get something together that's solid in terms of a publication for the public and on the website by July 1, and we'll do that for you, and you make very good points, Mr. Ramirez.
Just, I'm sorry, Katherine, just allow me one more moment. I just want the public to be aware of that this book, 2015, that Trustee Woodruff was here for the approval of that one. That, that's, you know, folks, if you had any doubt, anybody who's watching out there, that public education works, or whether it works or not, this, this shows that YISD for the last five years, it's been working, and for the next five years, we embrace the opportunity and the challenges, and, and so with that, like I said, you know who to blame now, because we were here. Trustee Woodruff, you've been required in, in the 2015 plan and, and put us on that track, thanks to the leadership, Dr. de la Torre, and, and the entire group out there that, that makes this happen. uh thanks to the leadership, Dr. La Torre and 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 the entire group out there that that makes this happen.
You have something to say, Ms. Lucero?
Yes, first I wanted to thank um Dr. La Torre for his humility regarding pictures. I kid. Um I just want to say that the plan was is was an inclusive effort and it was made up of the community members, employees, and of course, the board of trustees. Um I'm really, I'm excited with this plan. This, I I wasn't involved during the first one, but this one, we we, you know, we did collectively with this particular board. And I appreciate that there is some mention of social emotional learning um that goes in line with academics and um the other goals that that we set as um as the school district to include um holding ourselves accountable regarding our our bond projects. So I think this is a an extremely strong plan. I think it's a great path forward and and we're in this together. So thank you.
Any else? I think you've all brought up good points and I I welcome your comments, Mr. Ramirez. I think they should be incorporated in this document. I've spoken to Dr. De La Torre about it and he should be that be placed in this document. My question is uh, do we have to wait till the new document or can we accept it as is? Or?
No, I I think it's important to understand and and I think our public needs to understand that um the the goals that the board established and and the goals that the board, um excuse me, the targets that the goal that the board has agreed uh to hold is accountable for. Those, but as circumstance change uh in our life and and new realities, um and we're faced with new realities, we may have to times pivot, amend, modify. Uh and a perfect example of that is, you know, when we begin to work in uh an inclusive environment, an inclusive process with Dr. Lizzie Asbury, with uh our community, our students, teachers, staff, administrators, no one could have uh foreseen or anticipated what happened uh in early March. And so we were operating as if uh it would be business as usual. We don't want to retreat from the goals and we certainly don't want to retreat from the targets. But we will be coming back to the board, I think, uh regularly, consistently as new variables and circumstances present themselves. The to make modifications in terms of not the what that we want to accomplish, but the how. Uh because it's the how that that that's going to become a challenge for us. And so whereas in the past, uh we may have given technology and connectivity um their due place in the Strategic Action Plan, it's become very apparent that the students uh having possession of digital devices, teachers having possession of digital devices, uh expanding connectivity. I may have shared with some of you, just recently read a report that thirty seven percent of the people in the El Paso region do not have internet access. Uh and if you apply that to the forty one thousand students that we serve, we have to find a way to create hotspots and make sure that all of our students, even in the hybrid model, have internet access. And so that's some of the things that with the help of Lindley, Brenda, Bobby, Patricia, Rose, I mean, the entire team, we're going to be working on. It's almost like flying the or building the plane in flight. The good thing is you've got the best engineers in the region and and we'll get it done for you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dr. La Torre. So having said that, um I guess we could go ahead and and vote on this document. May I have a motion?
Um Cruz, before I make the, I think Mr. Rosales is asking for the floor.
Very quickly, and I hate to uh make this meeting long. I think the age of um of flexibility has hit a very square in the eyes. And exactly what you're saying, Dr. La Torre, uh the flexibility that we're going to have to work with for now is something that we may not have ever encountered before, but it's something that we are already embracing. And that's the difference of professionals and people that do reactive uh approaches to things. Or we're proactive and I appreciate that that thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Any further discussion? I have a motion.
Yes, uh President Ochoa. I move to approve the twenty twenty five strategic plan, which includes specific annual goals for early childhood literacy, for early childhood math and for college career and military readiness as required by state law and other strategic goals for academic performance and district operations for the next five school years.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Now, a second.
Second.
Um Mr. Rosales has second. Trustee Bustillos. Trustee, okay. What was that? I couldn't hear you.
Yay.
Okay, thank you.
Yay.
Trustee Rosales?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero?
Yay.
And I, Trustee Ros, oh, sorry.
Vote twice, buddy.
Yeah. Been a long day. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. All right, uh action item, which was number two, is now number three. Adoption of the twenty twenty one official budget. Is there any discussion? Mr. Rosales?
If, hey. And this won't too take too long, maybe till nine thirty, but just bear with me. The year two thousand twenty has turned out to be the most unusual year we have ever encountered in ninety years. COVID nineteen pandemic has turned this world completely upside down. The economy of this country has gone from robust to bleak in less than a few months. The US now has an unemployment rate of fourteen point seven, which is equivalent to twenty point seven million people out of work. These job losses are higher, they are higher than the depression and the numbers continue rise daily. On a local level or local view, El Paso and its surrounding counties now have in excess of thirty eight thousand one hundred and four people on the unemployment. The city of El Paso has furloughed, furloughed four hundred employees due to the deteriorating economic conditions and has instituted a reduction of salaries for those who are fortunate enough to still have jobs. County agencies have begun to address the food needs of the recently unemployed. By their observation, they now serve between twenty one thousand to thirty thousand families per week. Misinformation was provided by the El Paso's Fighting Hunger Food Bank. The district's twenty twenty budget is upon us and we must be prudent in our actions as we continue in this very difficult time. Our sources of revenue include the federal government, state government and the central appraisal district. On the state level, school funding or financing has been closely tied to the oil industry. As of March twenty twenty, that once robust industry has suffered indescribable losses. The price of oil has dropped to below one dollar per barrel. Going forward, these losses will undoubtedly severely impact the amount of funding available for the dis- districts throughout the state of Texas. Our local funding is dependent upon property obtained by the central appraisal district. I personally spoke to this central appraisal district uh late last week and I needed to find out the impact of what they felt might occur. Currently, they are completely at a loss as to what might happen. They honestly have no clue as to what will happen within the next twelve to four twenty four months. And here we're we're talking about major uh major, major foreclosures of homes. Although this has not been easy a choice for me, I cannot support a six million dollar increase at this time. I feel very strongly that physical restraint at critical times like this is extremely important. During my tenure as Board Trustee, I have and it will continue to support our employees. However, due to the uncertainty facing us down the road, it would be a fool's errand to end dead ourselves at this time. El Paso does not have a major corporate uh support or investment entities of any sort. And by all estimations, the recovery of COVID nineteen pandemic are going to take community like El Paso years to recover. Let's not kid ourselves. I've been on the board of trustee, I've been aboard a trustee for District Four since two uh two thousand fifteen. In these past five years, I have been extremely supportive of any effort to provide salary adjustments to our employees each year. Initially, in two fifteen, there were some who did not support providing salary increases. But it was evident that our hardworking employees and and salary um workers justly deserve pay increases. This, these increases have continued since two thousand fifteen, in addition to the year end stipend. Eastland Independent School District has increased salaries in the amount of nine million dollars during that time, plus another one point eight million dollars in the stipend. I truly value the teachers and employees of YSD and have demonstrated my full support of their work all during these years. Recently, the need to make an increase to employee health benefits has been a pressing issue for me. And I, along with the rest of the board, approved a three percent adjustment, which equates to an eight eighty nine thousand dollar monthly ba- on a monthly basis, an eighty nine thousand dollar cost or annually one point six million dollars. The fund balance currently is sufficient and we have to be real careful. It's sufficient for sixty three days of operating expenses. And that is to say, and we're not to receive any form, we're 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 facing. With the uncertainty surrounding us, it would be beneficial for this district to be prepared for what we may face or may be facing in into the future. If by some miracle, the projected projected uh economic decline does not materialize, it always would be possible to revisit the idea of salary increases at that time. I ask my fellow board members to act with caution, courage at this time to ensure the well-being of our students as well as our teachers and employees. I make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty budget excluding the pay raise of six million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. There's a motion. Yes.
I would like to have a further discussion. I I want to thank um Trustee Rosales for for bringing up some extremely important um some extremely important points and and um about what our community is facing, about the unemployment, about what the city um has had to do, as well as other um areas in business here here in our community. Um as a board member, um we're charged with with two things and and that's budget and policy. And so for this particular um for this particular budget cycle, it it has weighed heavier and would have to um really look at it with um with a keen eye. However, I I I think with our district, we're in the habit of and making decisions where where with the information we have in front of us at hand and not necessarily um what might happen. Um I think with in this upcoming academic year, we are heading into so many unknowns and our our administration is is planning work and working hard, as well as our teachers, um to prepare for what might come in September. Um after reviewing the budget extremely closely, I I have full confidence that we are able to move forward with a two percent raise for our employees as well as the five hundred dollar stipend at at Christmas. Um Trustee Rosales is right, we don't know what what the future holds. Um our legislators have an extremely tough um tough session um coming upcoming in January. Uh but for this particular budget cycle, I I I feel that we have the means to provide for our employees, which might also help to sustain some of them who might have spouses or significant others who have lost their jobs. Um the two percent on the Christmas stipend will 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 infuse um their their household income as well as the economy.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Ramirez?
Um I uh I uh I I I concur with all the recommendations that Mr. Rosales has made, the exception of the motion. Um and I I I will tell you, um at least for the public and anybody who's listening, we, this budget discussion has been an ongoing thing. Um it didn't just happen at a workshop and then today um uh the the cabinet, specifically Dr. La Torre and and this sleeper have have provided us updates and information. And and uh one of the things that we learned on last month, um and I'm going to say it's last month, the fact that we can do the two percent through the um the holiday stipend. Um but um you know, we we need to um to tighten our belts, we need to be prepared to do, you know, the the heavy lifting we need to be prepared to do our 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 fiduciary responsibility of, uh you know, if we need to do things. Um and and as Trustee Lucero, you know, pointed out, it's going to get tough. There's just no, there's sands or butts about it. But if you will allow me just another moment, um I'm I'm sitting here at my dining room table like most of America um for this meeting. I I have the pleasure of being married to a public school teacher and a son who's a public school teacher. Ms. Woodruff, uh Trustee Woodruff, as a is married to a public school teacher. Um Mr. Bustillos is a public school teacher. Um President Ochoa is a public school teacher. And I can tell you that I have seen that I never thought I would ever see. I have seen us sit here, three laptops at this dining room table and make things happen. And it wasn't enough to know the material, it wasn't enough to know the technology, it it wasn't enough to be flexible. Um it was just, you just had to work at it every day, every hour of every day because the message would change or the instructions would change. Um it it it's been challenging and and not the the least of it is to our students, you know, and and their families and 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 the hard work and 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 so when I when I hear these discussions, this is not a theoretical discussion to me. This is, I've been hearing her kids talk to her. Um I was sitting here this morning when a parent walked in and said, can I want to talk to you about my my child, you know, and uh those sort of things, you know. And and so i- it's been kind of interesting, the frustrations of of having to make phone calls, um you know, and having kids not wanting to answer the phone or or not showing up anymore or never showing up, you know. Um I I made the comment to uh to Dr. Chacon the other day that uh you know, we've only seriously, five hundred kids is is basically the kid number of students that we have not been able to contact. Um that's an amazing number when you look at other school districts around the state of Texas, ten, fifteen, twenty percent. And and we don't know, they don't know where those kids are. So um I I trust all is, I I I I believe him. And I got a phone, a couple of phone calls and they said, Mr. Ramirez, do your job. Don't, you know, don't vote for a pay raise, you know, because you need to save your money. You need to save your pennies for a rainy day. And I and I don't disagree, I think they're right. But I tell you what, I think now more than ever, our district, our staff, teachers, our support staff, the food service people who have never stopped working, our leadership, they've earned it, they deserved it. And uh and going forward, I think that it's going to be get even harder. I think it's going to get more challenging and they're truly going to earn it. And as long as we go into this with our eyes wide open, knowing that we may have to make some hard decisions going forward, then I I can support the budget as is, okay? I don't, I'm I'm not adverse to that. So um thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Yes, sir, Mr. Rosales.
Um my recommendation still includes the taking into account the the three percent. I'm not leaving the the school district teachers, but I'm I'm telling you right now, Mr. Lucero, and I'm here, you have every right to express your thoughts, but I'm going to let you know one thing. I've been in business I've been in business 50 years. Don't kid yourselves.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not kidding myself, I don't, I understand you directing the comment at me, so I'm going to respond to you. I, I've done my due diligence as well as the rest of this Board has. I've met with members of our delegation to find out where we're at. And so, and I'm also, one moment, sir, I also, I also serve on the Public and Ministry Board. And so I know where, where we're at regarding those items that you discussed.
Mr. Ochoa, I have the floor.
Yes, let him, let him finish, sir, Mr. Lucero.
I'm not going to take long. I'm just saying to you this, that the economic indicators do not paint a very pretty picture. Last week around, about, it might have been Tuesday, Monday, I came across an article and we're talking about getting America started. This, this pandemic is, 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 since it's worldwide, that particular article goes into explaining a, a possible prediction of around 36 countries experiencing famine of biblical proportions. And I'm not, I'm not putting anybody down, I just want to, I just want to make sure that, that I express my concern for the times that we're living in. I hope it doesn't happen. I'd rather be wrong than correct. I just want to make sure that this school district is able to respond to the needs of the children. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Okay. No further discussion. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ochoa.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
I believe there's a motion on the floor that Mr. Rosales made, but, and, and you should, if there's no second, then it dies. And then another motion can be made.
Miss Austin, he made the motion, but there was no second.
Exactly.
And then if, if that's the ruling of the chair, absolutely, proceed.
We all heard him make his motion and I didn't hear a second. That's why I, I took it as that there was no action to be taken. Okay. So may I have a motion for this action item?
Mr. Ochoa, this is Connie Woodruff. I move to approve a resolution adopting the 2020-21 official budget, including the general fund budget, the child nutrition service budget, and the debt service budget by fund and function as shown on Schedule A to the resolution and incorporating provisions of the 2020-2021 annual compensation plan as shown in the resolution as presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Mr. Ramidis, second. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramidis, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
No. Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote. Results are in, five in favor, one opposed. Okay, action item number four, which previously was number three. Approval of construction methodology for BP-1909A Capistrano Elementary School Renovations and Upgrades Project. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
President Ochoa?
Mr. Ramidis, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to use the construction manager's risk methodology for BP-1909A Capistrano Elementary School Renovations and Upgrades project and ratify the issuance of a solicitation of a construction manager at risk.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Bustillos, we have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Okay. Mr. Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramidis, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. Okay. Now we have action item number five, which was previously number four. Approval of construction apprenticeship provisions. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
We have a motion by Ms. Woodruff.
I move, I move to approve a board resolution for inclusion of provisions for participation in certified apprenticeship programs for contractors and subcontractors in district construction projects and selection criteria for construction awards over $500,000 as presented.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Woodruff. May I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Trustee Bustillo, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Ramidis, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. Okay. Let's see. Item number, action item number six, which was previously number five. Discussion and possible determination on process to fill Board member vacancy. On Monday, May 11th, the Board voted to fill the vacancy by appointment. So we can skip this item. If we need, if we find we need to still take action on this item before the committee. Safi has advised me. Action item number six was already taken care of, item number one. We move on to action item number seven. Possible action to fill the vacancy in any Board officer position. If there is no objection, I would like to table this item for future meeting.
I, I concur with that, President Ochoa. I think that would be a good idea to have, have our new Board member on.
If there is no objection, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
I move.
Adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.